We encourage City Council to vote to approve the door and sincerely thank you for the thoughtfulness that has been put into this initiative overall.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak or against any of the items on the agenda this evening?
I didn't know if Dora was appropriate at this time.
Correct.
Okay. My name is Chris Heckman. I privilege to serve as a pastor, one of the pastors at Troy First. The back of this church. I just first want to thank you for being a community partner and caring so much about the growth and integrity of our community. As an elder under full-time appointment in the West Ohio Conference, I also serve as a discretion of district leadership. And the bishop represents 409 members churches all across western half of the state. And they wish to, our legal counsel of the district wishes that I speak on their behalf to share some further concerns. From their perspective, the application process has not been completed as they read the statute. There's still elements that need to be tidied down from their perspective. And so I would just plead not, we, I personally do not wish to see Dora go anywhere. I understand we live in the 21st century, but I would ask that some of the boundary markers just be refined. As it relates to other nonprofits in the area, for example, our half block across from 110 West Franklin. That serves hundreds of folk who are going through recovery and numerous students, young children. There's nothing on our side of the block except the city council hall. If you have cocktail hour, I'm sorry, but I wish that, we said you just reframed from that designation. I've been a member citizen of Minders County most all my life, lived and worked here. Ever since I was about five years old, Troy has always been a destination for my family. From the Flash Restaurant, anyone old enough to remember that, they had the best cheeseburgers on their kids menu I've ever had. Nice crisp french fries and sweetest little ladies.
After your two minutes are up, but I'll give you five seconds to finish up.
All right. So it's been a destination for 50 years. It was the quality of events, our establishments and the people, not bullies on the subject.
All right.
So great.
Anyone else wish to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address and you have two minutes.
My name is Joyce Manham. I have seven state offices in Troy. Regarding Dora, I agree with the letter from Nancy Fons, which was read. For example, are we showing to our young people, funny example, are we showing to the young people? Just carrying an alcoholic drink around town. Probably the family friendly crowd, families. I've heard some young ones who are saying already that they did not wish to bring the children to towns that people are spending. Children as well as teens, young adults are in the same way they see. So what about those who need to avoid alcohol? This is one more. And this is one more place to see alcohol. Pushed all the time. So why is walking around town better than just a drink when you enjoy your meal? What are the reasons for beginning with noon? It's going to be just anything that's a little bit different than it is now. Doesn't really help businesses. I've talked to some business owners that do not agree. They don't want. And people walking into this store. And I know that's gonna have a steal on it. But this is really help businesses. Does it really make Troy a better city? Just because other cities have doors. I've heard that some of those are sorry to open it up. Where it's still be the family friendly city that we love. I don't know necessarily if Dora is a bad, bad idea, but I cannot see it as a good idea. I can't see that it's that we send them. There could be problems.
May I have your two minutes left? Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I know we heard from the businesses.
May I have your name and address, please?
My name is Elaine Newman and I live at 24, 2507 Andrew Drive in Troy. Um, we work from the businesses, but I wonder how many people have had the opportunity to express their concerns about this issue. I don't know everything that's in it and I, that is my fault for not reading it. I understand that some family things that are planned downtown, that this could be shut down. I like to see those things written out. And also things like the, what happens during 4th of July, strawberry festival. The children's parade for Halloween and Christmas parade. I understand that this would have to be released in some way. So is that gonna take more manpower for that? Anyway, I, I don't like. Just Newman said, I don't see where it's a good thing. I only see problems. And I have celebrated many, many holidays in my 75 years. And I never had to have a job to drink for alcoholic drinks for that. And I don't see where we have to bring it out into the public. People can, if they want to do those things, have opportunity to go in the restaurants or go far and do that. That's up to them. So I just don't think it's something that should be pushed on the people. And if there are any ways that this could be a referendum that could be voted on by the community.
So anyone else who has any thoughts that they'd like to share at this time on any of the items on the agenda? Please give your name and address. You have two minutes.
My name is John Henry. I am the owner of Trojan City Music at 106 East Main Street. I've been here for all meetings and haven't really heard anything that causes a lot of concern. Seems like the reports that you've drawn from other cities that have passed these have all shown very positive benefits from it. As a business owner that is open during the hours that will take place, I'm very much looking forward to it. When we get past restrictions, when we can start having events that are sore again, I think this is only gonna benefit the, the people that we have. If I have any concern, it's about potential trash issues with the cubs that are coming through. I don't pretend to be any smarter than anybody on the council, but I've wondered if anybody's thought about like Troy's own recycling kind of process? Where there could be specific cans for those cubs and then they can be distributed back to bars, cleaned and reused. I don't know if that's something anybody's thought about, but that is the only concern I have is that there's gonna be some extra trash potentially. Other than that, I think it's a great, great idea. And even with that, I think it's a great idea.
Good evening. 10th Road, 819, Blamore, Fort City, Ohio. I am a recovery pastor here down the street in the same church that Chris is at. And we have actually, we have 10 meetings, seven days a week in that building for any kind of recovery additions, alcohol, drugs. And again, it's not my concern about the downtown area as a lot of people are speaking. But in that area on that street or maybe it could be carried over into our parking lot there too. Don't worry about that. So that's my major concern is just for the addictions.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Staten, 1001 Charleston Court. My wife Julie is back there as well. We are 21-year residents of Troy, raised two kids here. We love this town and do not support Dora. I just don't think it's who we are. And I'm also a member of the first name of this church and wanna support Pastor Chris and Pastor Tim. We've got recovery ministries happening and we certainly don't want this near our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any of the items on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move into resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read resolution R8 2021?
Resolution number RA 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy Ohio. To advertise the biz and enter into a contract for the Marina Building Loading Dock Support Project. Calls not to exceed $70,000, which is budgeted at first reading.
Let's counsel.
Who's second?
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Swizer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Williger, accepted by Mr. Allen. Any final comments or questions on this side? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate your resolution R9 2021.
Resolution number R9 2021. Resolution amending, resolution number R69 2020. Authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio. To advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the State Route 41 West Main Street Traffic Signal Interconnect Project Phase Two. Increasing the authorized amount and declaring an emergency. This increases the authorization to $375,000. First reading.
Let's counsel.
Move on the other suspension. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. This is Knight. Will you please call the rolls?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
For adoption. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Swazer. And any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, you appreciate your resolution R10 2021.
Resolution number R10 2021. Resolution accepting the recommendations of the Tax and Senate Review Council and declaring an emergency. Recommendation is that the five enterprise zone agreements be continued. This is the first reading.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Sneak. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the rolls?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
We'll do it. Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, we appreciate your resolution R11 2021.
Resolution number R11 2021. Resolution accepting the recommendation of the Tax and Senate Review Council to the Town Park Tiff and declaring an emergency. Recommendation is that the tiff be continued. This is the first reading.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the last resolution for the evening? Resolution R12 2021.
Resolution number R12 2021. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio. To advertise for bids for a farm lease agreement for undeveloped land located at Paul G. Duke Park. This is the first reading.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sneak? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twoliger?
Yes.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Williger, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We will move on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance, oh, 112021.
Ordinance number oh, 112021. An ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area known as the downtown Troy Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area and enacting regulations. This is the second reading.
And second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Any final comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Now.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance, oh, 132021.
Ordinance number oh, 132021. Ordinance adopting the plan of the City of Troy, Ohio, emergency operations plan and declaring an emergency. This is the routine updating of the plan for street.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt by Mr. Schwayzer, seconded by Mr. Twist. Any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Schwayzer?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to communications and announcements. Are there any this evening?
Just a reminder about filing financial disclosure statements. That's it.
Moving on to comments of elected officials. Mayor Oda?
I do have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tissington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to make sure everybody knows that we do have our annual spring cleanup. So April 12th through the 17th, people can put out extra trash. We're encouraging people to do some cleanup after the winter between the yard waste and extra trash. It's outside the toders and we will, as long as it's bagged and neat enough, then we will pick it up for that week. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I don't have anything to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggin?
Not tonight, Mr. Brenner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments? Seeing none, are there any staff members that would like to make any comments this evening? We'll open it up for comments from the general public. If you have any desire to address council on any item, please feel free to come up to the podium, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume. Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. Our next meeting will be April 5th, right here after the home order.